Well, in the meanwhile, we can begin our selectmen, select board meeting. If, I don't know, Rich, do we have a flag?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Would everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the public.
One nation, one nation.
Justice for all.
Now, for those select board members who have your packet, would someone like to read the community prayer?
I have it here, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Mighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we convene our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us, that we can become. Help us achieve the goals, our commitment in this office, that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift up our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that all we seek. And keep serving, and keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, so we have quite a ways to go. Is anyone here for citizens' participation?
I am Savory Moore, 12 South Main Street.
Okay, anybody else?
I am potentially, it's Paul Kelly.
Paul Kelly, and your address, Paul?
Thirty-six Leonard Street, Carver. I got a letter as well.
Siri, why don't you go first? We'll give you a couple of minutes.
Okay, very, very quickly, these are just a couple of things that came out of last week's town meeting. Right towards the very end, there was a question on solar and battery storage. I had a meeting or a site visit with conservation today, and we talked a little bit about what the rules are. And I believe that perhaps the interim town administrator might address this. I saw it was on the agenda. But it seems that the fees paid to the town for solar are based on the wattage, the output that the, that the array produces. So whether or not that solar project includes battery storage is really immaterial. So I know that that was a question that came up towards the end of town meeting. The second thing I wanted to just mention quickly was the very last article, which was the one that was submitted by the public about eminent domain. I know that it was pushed to be becoming a committee through the select board to talk about eminent domain. And I just want to make sure that the committee members look at the laws that are already in place, both on the local, state, and federal level. Because there are a lot of protections built in as to what can and can't be done with eminent domain. I read what the article is, and I just want to make sure that there's due diligence done. Economic development will provide tax funding needed to help maintain Carver's rural character if that were to happen. It will create jobs and perhaps help fill the half-empty strip malls around the town if eminent, you know, if something happens. The question, or one of the questions arises is that what if South Coast Health wanted to build a medical facility and needed property to do so? There, if, the way the article was written, it would not be Carver buying it, it would be a third party. But South Coast Health is a not-for-profit health system. However, on the other hand, and, excuse me, Beth Israel is for profit. So if they wanted to do the same thing, would they have to play under different rules? Or would they be disallowed from doing it because they were a corporation as opposed to South Coast, which is not for profit? Finally, by restricting the eminent domain to the town as being the only people who could take the property, that puts the town in a position to pay the fair market value only, which may be less than what the property owner would get from a private entity. It will also remove that property from the tax rolls. So just whenever this committee is put together, or whatever, you know, the members of the select board are chosen to sit down and talk about this, it really, due diligence has to happen to make sure that they know what's already in place and to make sure that it's not so restrictive that, that we end up hurting the town. The laws need to be written that provide the best future for the town of Carver, not necessarily for just some of its residents. That's it.
Thank you. We'll take your comments under advisement. Mr. Kelly, would you like to say anything now?
Yeah, primarily, I was here for a letter that I received in regards to a legal notice for a public hearing in regards to an underground storage tank. So I was primarily trying to find out details about it and then may have questions coming up.
The hearing is, is a public hearing, call you most certainly allowed to speak, allowed to speak. So stick around.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, I have 707, is that, does everyone concur?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So why don't we do, can we skip down to the request for use of town property? And, okay. So that's a request for use of town property, Balance for Kids Organization at Shirtlift Park for the following dates. And then there is a list of dates. Is there a motion?
Ready for motion for the request for town property for Balance for Kids, the date listed.
I'll second it.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I have some.
Yes.
I'm not against this, but they're asking for usage of Shirtlift Park for two times a day, it looks like, one in the morning and one in the afternoon. So that's restricting it out, that there's signage, I think, should be placed so people understand that it is sectioned off during that timeframe. I think that should be part of the, the usage of it. And that's really it. I just want to make sure people understand that it is closed off during those periods for the event. And.
Thank you.
And one, one other thing, I'm sorry. The other thing is, is that it, I did some research on this and just let people know, it appears that they want to do a yoga-type class for disability, kids with disabilities, it looks like. So that's the purpose of it.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Bell. Mr. LaFawn, when you issue their, whatever they get, permit, letter, could you ask, could you ask, see that something is posted at Shirtlift Park during?
Yes, I, yes, I'll be happy to.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Can we vote on this?
Yeah, we need to vote on this.
Thank you, we need to vote. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And do we have to do this by a roll call for each one of the votes? Because it's on Zoom?
Previous guidance I had gotten from Copland Page, they had told me that every time there's a vote on Zoom, you're supposed to do a roll call vote. I don't know if that's changed.
Okay.
Okay, let's do that then. Mr. Bellbin.
Robert Bellbin says aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
Ms. Bogart.
Aye.
No, you'd say Ms. Bogart says aye.
Well, technically, I'm Mrs. Bogart, but no matter who it is, I say aye.
Mr. Townsend.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Sarah Hewin says aye. Okay, there you go. Okay, that brings us to 710. Is there, is the applicant or their representative here at the meeting?
Look at that, oh.
Excuse me?
Sarah, it doesn't look like there's anybody else hooked up to, for this public hearing, for this storage tank.
Rich, is there anyone, is there anyone in the waiting room ready?
Yes. Yeah.
Sarah, you kind of came in and out on that, just to let you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there anyone in the waiting room?
Yeah. Not for that. Weird.
Whoever's speaking, having real difficulty hearing them.
Him and I.
People being numb.
Represent the applicant?
So it, it looks like, I'm wondering if there's too many people on this for it to work, because Sarah, you keep coming in and out. And who's ever on the phone, then it, it's having some issues. So it looks like Sarah's dropping out and she's going to re-enter. So we'll just wait for Sarah. And I have no music today, I'm sorry.
Sarah's still here.
We'd be in and out, we hit the, tip it on, okay. I think it was in the waiting room.
Hold on, guys, I'm coming.
Until the next election.
Okay, are we all back? Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hello.
Aye.
Okay. Who is 508-208-6217?
That's Tim Walsh and three others from the planning office.
Okay, all right. With you in the planning office, Mr. Walsh.
We have Kevin Robinson, a member of the planning board, Ellen Sardillo, alternate for on the planning board, and Mr. Richard Dion, one of the candidates for the planning.
Okay, very good. So what I'd like to know, Mr. Walsh, is do we have the applicant, the proponent, and/or their representative for this public hearing?
Oh, for Santana Way, I wasn't involved with that. We're here for the, for the planning board joint with the select board.
Okay, I see. So there's no, there's no applicant.
So I'll make a motion that we hold this off to our next meeting.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, discussion. Rick, could you find out what happened here?
Yes, I will. I'm not, I don't know that they have, they did not contact this office today, so I don't know if there was, I don't believe there was any request for a postponement, so I'm a little confused here too, but I will contact the applicant and find out.
Yeah, I mean, this is kind of a big deal project. We have the Assistant Deputy Fire Chief here to help walk us through it, so we're going to have to do this all over again, folks. Sorry. Okay, there's a motion and a second. All in favor of public hearing?
Robert Bellbin says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
Mr. Townsend.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Ms. Bogart.
Jen Bogart says aye.
Sarah Hewin says aye.
Thank you, Jesse and Paul, we'll see you later.
Yeah, thank you, Jesse, for showing up and, and you too, Paul.
Keep me informed, this is where we're going to have the hearing once again, and I'll be here.
Of course.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jesse.
I just wanted to make sure, will we be notified?
Thanks, Jesse.
By email or something, or will it be basically the same time next week?
Well.
We will notify you, the selectman's office will notify you.
Great, thank you very much, best of luck. Great job, everybody.
Post-public hearing notice anyway, so you'll probably see it again.
Right.
Thank you.
You may be getting another butters notice from the applicant.
Yeah.
Oh, goody.
Okay, um, moving right along, team, a joint meeting with the planning board. Mr. Mackey, would you like to bring your committee?
Yes, I would love to, thank you. I'd like to open the planning board meeting of July 7th, that's 7:15, and this is a joint meeting with select board through remote access via Zoom. And tonight, the planning board is meeting with the select board to jointly appoint two regular members and possibly a new associate member to the planning board. So since I can't see everybody, I just kind of do, like to do a roll call, see who's here. I'm here, Kevin Robinson, are you here?
Kevin Robinson is here.
Okay, John Gasky?
John Gasky's here.
Okay, and then Ellen Sardillo?
Ellen Sardillo is here.
Okay, thank you. All right, if I could just tell you the story of why we're here tonight. We have two regular member seats that are available, and one was Jen Bogart's seat, which was for three years to 2023, and the second seat for a full-time position was for Jim Hoffman, which was one year to 2021. So we have four candidates here. And if it's all right with you, Sarah.
Yes.
We have Ellen Sardillo here, we have Roger Shores here, is, and Cornelia Shea, I think I saw him, and Richard Dion, and Richard is here too.
If it helps to clarify, I'm only interested in the one-year position, if that helps in any way or hurts in any way, I just want to.
I think what we'll do, if it's, if it's all right with Sarah, we'll just have everybody give their speech of why they are looking for this position, and then we can vote. We can vote for someone to fill the three-year position and then the one-year position. And depending how things go, then we may have to vote on a new associate member.
And I also would like to request that if the members have a question that they want to ask of the applicant, that they be given a chance to do that.
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
If we could, if we could just start, I guess we'll start in alphabetical order. If Richard Dion would like to speak before the boards.
Good evening, everybody, how you doing?
Good, thanks.
Well, it's time to get a position, because, you know, I live here in Atomic Carver. You know, I would like to see my community grow to something great. I would like to see some more commercial buildings put in the town, try to help out the communities, and like you said, participate in my community here. Is there anything you'd like to know?
Yeah, I have a question.
Do the members of the select board have a question? Mr. Bellbin.
And I'll basically ask this for all of them, this is, how familiar are you with our bylaws that we have within our town?
Well, I have read on some of the bylaws. I would have to look into most of them. I do not memorize them.
I agree with him, I think that there's.
As, you know, time goes on, if elected into this, I would have to study up on some of the bylaws for the planning board, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Do other members of the select board have a question?
Yeah, I think to, to piggyback on, on Bob's question, Mr. Dion, how, have you read the town's most recent master plan? Because that has a lot to do with planning and encompasses more than just commercial development.
Well, I have read some of that about, you know, maybe putting waste disposal down by a shawn or putting some hotel there, some five, community buildings up. Does that answer your question?
Have you read the master plan document that the town made with Serpeth a few years ago?
No, I have not. I haven't had the chance to do that.
Other board members have questions?
I don't have any at this time, but I might have some after the, all the gentlemen, all the folks have the chance to speak.
Thank you. Mr. Hoffman.
I just have one, one quick question. Richard, if you were, if you had a proposal in front of you that you personally do not believe should get approved, but they repeal the bylaws, what would you do in that situation?
Jim, I can't understand you at all, I'm sorry.
I didn't get to question either.
Okay, can you hear me better?
That's better.
Okay. If, if you're presented with a proposal by an applicant before the planning board, and you personally do not feel comfortable with that project, but it does pass all the bylaws, how would you vote on that?
How would I vote on that? The way I would feel about it, I would have to, you know, study about it early. I'd have to really think about everything. Building entrance, you know, park, it's all that. You know, whether I like it or not, if it's something good for the town, I would put yes on it.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Dion, my question is, actually is. I'm sorry, did you hear? My question is, Dion?
No, I did, no, I did not.
Okay, how would you, what is the role of the planning board?
Planning board, the role of the planning board is to work with the map. It's to help, help, to build individual homeowners on certain building needs and so. Like I said, you know, I would have to read a little bit more into this. Like, I didn't really get into it, thought, I wonder if I was going to be accepted to the board.
Dog wants to come to the meeting. Mr. Mackey, who would you like to go next?
Yes, anybody on the plane, well, let me, let me go next. You know, I have to ask this question. The planning board meets on the second and, and fourth Tuesday of the month normally, and it's at seven o'clock. Are you going to be available at those times?
Yes.
All right. We also do site walks. Now, I, I can't see, I can't, I can't see your face, but some of our members are retired, some, some are still working. Sometimes we do site walks in the morning or in the evening. Would you be available for site walks?
Absolutely.
All right, now, okay, I don't, okay. Is there any other planning board members that would like to, oh, just for everybody's information, who's ever picked tonight, we have training sessions for planning board members scheduled, or we're trying to schedule them, just to update all the new planning board members. So that'll be a help to everybody. Is there anybody else that would, from the planning board, that would like to ask a question?
So I'm here, Kevin Robinson, and my question, of course, I'm very fortunate to be able to sit across from him six feet. And my question would be, given the opportunity to come on and look at an alternate, would that be something that you would consider opposed to the position? And which positions are you looking for?
I was looking to be on the, in the board position, not an alternate. It's like anything else. It'd be my first time doing it, be a good learning experience for me, it's a new face, you know. If it turns out to be an alternate, it's an alternate, but that's not what I was looking for.
How would you feel if you were, be an alternate, though, if you were not chosen for either of the, one?
How would I feel? Yes, I'd be all right with it if it was taken down to.
First, I think being an alternate is an excellent way to get, to learn and to learn from the other members on the board, those that experience like Ms. Mackey, possibly myself, and see how that works coming in. So I just want, I felt if you were not chosen, would you still be available for an alternate position?
There's a possibility, yes.
That's my question, Bruce.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. Anyone else? Mr. Gasky?
I don't have any questions right now.
All right. So let's, okay, so we'll go on. Does anybody else have any other questions before we go on to the next candidate? Okay, seeing no one, let's go on to Cornelia Shea.
Yes, sir.
If you would like to tell you, tell us.
You'll need to unmute your mic.
I believe I unmuted it, is, can everybody hear me?
Yes, you're fine now.
Well, I didn't really plan a speech, but I know how important the planning board is into the development of a community and the direction on which it goes. I also see that the transfer of development rights bylaw will be coming up, and I would like to see a little more beefiness to that in the next year. And other than that, I, as everybody here is well and familiar with, I have offered to serve with the community for several years now and would like to continue to do so. Thank you.
Ms. Mack, Ms. Mack, would you like, the select board?
I didn't get, I didn't hear that, Sarah.
Would you like the select board to ask questions first?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay. Any of the select board members have questions for Mr. Shea?
Yeah. This, the same question I asked the prior applicant. Have you read the town bylaws? Are you familiar with them?
I'm, I'm very familiar with both the zoning and the general, the bylaws in general. I've read them all several times. I'm not word-for-word committed to memory, but yes, I, I understand the building codes and the zoning bylaws.
Thank you.
I have also read the master plans for the past couple that we've had anyways, in case that question comes up. Ms. Bogart?
Stole it, took the words right out of my mouth.
Very good. Mr. Hoffman?
I'd like to ask the same question, Tony. If an issue comes up that passes the bylaw, but you personally don't want to see the project in town, how would you vote on that?
I would have to, if it passes the bylaws and it's in the best interest in, in the town as designed by the bylaws, then I'd have to vote for it. I wouldn't have, I wouldn't be able to, personal opinion, everybody gets treated the same to me. If I'm going to let one person do it, I'm going to let the other person do it, there's no special favors.
Okay, thank you.
And Sarah, Mr. Shea, just quickly, did I hear you say earlier in the meeting that you were only interested in the one-year position?
Yes, sir. Should I decide to continue on, I will go out and campaign for it. Maybe not the most successful campaigner, but nonetheless, I feel that planning in the town is very. Maybe not the most successful campaigner, but nonetheless, I, I feel that planning in the town is very important, and I'm more than willing to work for it.
Okay, thank you.
And Ms. Everyone's pros again. Jen, you had your question answered?
Yeah, he answered it before I asked.
Okay, and. What, what is the role of the planning board?
The role of the planning boards, three major roles is, well, of course, the, the master plan, which I believe is every 10 years. We just had one two years ago. Then there's the subdivision. Questions and design and planning and subdivision, special permits, requests, and finally zoning bylaws, reviewing, asking, putting them forward and holding hearings for them.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mackey?
Yes, would you be available on Tuesdays, Tuesday nights, the second and fourth evenings?
I, I am. Yes, I'm a stay-at-home dad, so I have a lot of free time, a little less since school's been remotely done, but I, I think it's easy enough to fit in the schedule.
And would you be able to do sight walks during the daytime with us?
Anytime you need me, Bruce, I could be there.
Okay, okay, thank you. Anyone else from the planning board have any questions? Kevin?
Yeah, personally, I know Connie is probably the best person for this position. And I would kind of like to know why he's not interested in the, the three-year position?
Again, if, if I'm going to decide, my wife's got me on a little short leash when it comes to, to running campaigns, but I feel that if I do a good job, then I, I, I'm familiar with the, the process of running for office and should, and had I done it before, should do it again. And this is the position I'm interested in, then I will run wholeheartedly.
So why don't you want to be on the three-year? Why wouldn't you want to be voted in for this position?
Well, that's going to tie me up, and, and again, a lot can happen in a year. We all know that, what's happened this year with COVID-19, the closing of the schools, closing of the businesses, so I, I, not at this particular moment in time, willing to go beyond that because I might be practicing homeschooling come September, and we'll have to see where, where that leads to my schedule.
I appreciate your honesty. I was just looking for you to fill that three-year position because having lost Ms. Bogart and Mr. Hoffman, and then Will stepping down and retiring, we took a big hit, and I guess I'm just like Ms., like Chair Mackey, I'm, I'm looking for, you know, commitment. But I, I understand the.
I certainly understand, Kevin, but I, you have two very experienced ones, and your newest member, I've had the opportunity to meet is, is a very intelligent person. I've gotten to know Rich Dion a little over the past couple of years, and I, I found him to be forthright and honest. I haven't had much of a chance to meet Mr. Shores or Mrs. Sardillo, but I, I do believe you have a fair and very good pool of candidates to pull from.
I think it's wonderful. I'm very happy about it.
All right, you, are your questions asked, Kevin?
I'm, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gasky, you have any questions?
No, like I said, I, I think I'm going to reserve things for the, for the end.
Okay. All right. So if there are no more questions from any of the, either boards, we'll move on to Roger Shores. If you would like to speak and, and tell us why you applied for the planning board position, Mr. Shores?
All right, I applied for the planning board because I care very much about this town. I've served this town, whether it be in the fire service, qualified for 23 years. Raised five kids. Conservation Commission, this town is a lot to be. And while I was on the school study, youth committee, getting plans that would help us build a police station and fire station. Twelve years ago, I noticed a lot of problems, we did, Dad. A lot of problems with the master plan at that time. Most of those problems have been taken care of now. It would be our duty, as you know, obviously, to be on the board. We worked on that.
Mr. Shores, I'm sorry, I lost the last part of what you just said.
I don't have a stopwatch, Ms. Hewitt.
No, no, I just, I didn't hear the last part of what you said.
About the master plan?
Yes.
Yes. Twelve years ago, when we were on the schools, town building study committee, Steve Pratt, Ed Ryan, and myself. The master plan at that time was very, very poor, but it's been taken care of since that time. But, but I think that the planning board has an obligation to continually review that and update it as needed. I've done other things that I'm, that's basically the reason I'm running is because I love the town, and five kids went through the school system. I've lived here for 45 years.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shores.
Thank you.
Sarah, if you'd like the select board to ask questions, go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Balbin?
I'm sure I know the answer to this already, Roger, but are you familiar with our town bylaws?
I am, I'm quite familiar with the bylaws. Like anybody, I'd, I'd have to review each one as they were coming in for any type of project. I do think it's a straightforward thing, though. The bylaws are the bylaws. As, as I read through and through the year. You have the bylaws, and the applicants should live up to the bylaws. And if they don't, then, then the project, development of the project probably should be taken to the appeals. And then there's plenty of time. I've read many court cases about the planning board's decisions going into the. That is a great reference, too.
Thank you.
All right, I'll ask my follow-up. Have you read the town's most recent master plan and what are your thoughts on it?
Have I read the master plan?
The most one yet.
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
I think he answered my question. My answer, Bob. I'm all set. Thank you.
Mr. Townsend?
Roger, thank you. Roger, are you interested in both positions, both the three-year and the one-year?
I'd be more interested in the three-year.
Would you be open to either one?
Excuse me?
Would you be open to either one?
I'd be open to the one.
Thank you.
And Mr. Shores, I know you know my question. You, you've pretty much answered it, but I'm, I'm looking for your, what you think is the role of the planning board?
Well, it's, it's the study. The development projects that are coming in.
Can you move a little closer to the microphone?
Sure, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I can turn the volume up to. Where did, where did I lose you?
Here you go. We hear you now.
Okay. Okay, the role of the planning board was the question?
Yes, yes, thank you.
It's to take development projects, evaluate them in terms of how they fit into the bylaws. Light plan reviews, even SOC statements. But, but it's, it's well written in the bylaws. The bylaws, in my mind, are very good, but as the town changes and is still growth, there's huge projects that have begun in town in terms of development. You have the federal family company that could put, I don't know, I think, like four, four A lots. So, so we have to be very careful as we go forward and go forward at a pace that the town can afford it. As, as my son's visiting from Chicago, visiting me and my family. He's, he's thinking about moving here because of the rural character, and I think that's very important to keep.
Thank you so much. Mr. Mackey?
Yes, thank you. I, I know, I have a feeling you'll be available on Tuesday nights, the second, fourth, the fourth nights.
Yes, I will.
And then you could do sight walks with us. Are you available during the daytime or?
I, I am.
Okay, well, that's, that's great. Thank you. Anyone else on the, Kevin, do you have any questions?
I do. I, I pretty much all have the same question. Given the fact that we have terrific candidates for these positions, would you be interested in being alternate?
No, I don't think I would have this time.
Okay, and because my other question is, given the fact that I would be on a one-year or a three-year, would you be willing to run for the same position?
Well, I'd like the three-year position right now. But I'd be open for the one. I've just been in so much, involved in so many town elections, I've been burnt up. Right now, I need a little rough.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Kevin. Mr. Gasky, you have any questions?
No, I've got one developing, but it's going to be for everybody.
Okay. Okay, so the next on the list is Ellen Sedillo, who is currently our alternate, but is also seeking a permanent position on the planning board. So would you like to speak to us, Ellen?
Sure. I just want to thank you all for letting me have the opportunity to go for a member of the planning board. I'm, unlike the others, I don't have the background, although I have been reading, I have been learning and going online and speaking with Mr. Walsh. I, I have a, a large interest in having things grow in cover. You know, going on the rules and regulations of the bylaws. And I've been on several committees in the town and wanted to be somewhere where I could have a voice. And I feel that the planning board, me, permanent member, I'm still a baby as far as learning everything, but I can't get enough of it now. I'm sort of addicted to the whole thing. And I can only tell you that I will work my hardest and put my best foot forward and be there for Tuesdays and sight walks and for any training or questions that anybody wants to give me, I'm open to that. And most of the time, I'm a quick learner, and I would really like to serve cover in this capacity.
Okay, thank you, Ellen. Sarah, if the select board wants to ask questions, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Mr. Balbin?
Hi, Ellen. The same question I asked the prior when you came before us, but have you looked at the, the bylaws and?
I have been reading them. You know, I, I have some questions, and Mr. Walsh has been very handy as far as answering individual questions that, that I have. I will keep reading and doing research so that if I am chosen, I will be the best planning board member that I can be.
Thank you very much.
Ellen, in all the reading that you've been doing, have you read the latest master plan?
You know, I haven't, to be perfectly honest with you, Ken, but I would love to start reading that as soon as possible. Just give me a project, and I will be here and fulfill it entirely.
Mr. Hoffman?
Hi, Ellen. I think you know what my question is. If, if the project's presented before you and something that you personally don't like is for the passage of all the bylaws, how would you vote for that project?
I would do what's right. I would make sure that if I even had questions, I would be able to ask them. But if it follows all the bylaws and all the rules and regulations, then, and it was for the benefit of the town of cover, I would definitely go with it.
Thank you.
And Ellen, I just, just, are you interested in both the three-year and the one-year positions?
Yes, I am. Mostly the three-year, but I would certainly go for the one-year if that was offered.
Thank you.
And Ellen, my question is the same as what I've asked the others. What, what, in your opinion, is the role of the planning board?
Probably one of the most important committees in the town, beside the select board, of course. Just going over new businesses that want to come in the town, make sure they follow all the rules and regulations that are put forth. And, you know, question things that don't seem to be clear and to make sure that the person that's approaching us would, would be able to explain why they do things a certain way and make sure that it's for the benefit of the whole town.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Mackey?
All right, I, I know, Ellen, that you're available for the meetings because you've, you've been to our meetings the past few times. And you've, you've also been on our site visits and sight walks. And I also know that you've been, you've, you've done some training with Mr. Walsh and myself on the internet, so. Other than, I don't have really any other questions than that, than those comments. Do you have any questions, Kevin?
Well, of course, I, I would imagine everybody knows that the fact that she's already alternate, and I personally like that way of somebody coming in and learning and working with the others. So I'm not going to ask her if she didn't get the one-year or three-year position to be the alternate, because I know she personally would. So I'd just like to ask you, how are you about keeping this town rural?
You know, I love cover for what it is, and as much as I see that we're going forward, I'd like to keep flavor of the town the way it is because it is different than any place I've ever lived. And I've lived in the city, and I've lived in the country, and cover has, is such a special place to me. You know, I used to come here as a kid to Edoville Railroad, and I used to look around and think, what would it be like to live here? And who knew that not only would I be living here, but be part of this community? I have actually worked at Edoville Railroad a couple of times because it's very endearing to me. And I'm for anything that will keep this town rural and also go forward in the modern ways.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Gasky?
Okay, well, Ellen kind of.
Okay, well, Ellen kind of hinted along the lines of the question that I had. And I was just kind of putting it out to anybody that wants to answer this. How you guys feel about any of the necessary changes that we may have to make to zoning bylaws and whatnot to be able to expand business growth and development here in in Carver to increase some of the tax base?
Can I say something about that? Or are you directing that?
We can start with you, Ellen.
Okay, so years ago, I worked for the Carver Reporter. I worked for South Shore News and the Mariner Newspapers. And I had Carver as a territory and always wondered why businesses didn't stay here. What was preventing businesses from having a prolonged, you know, shelf life here? And it's something that's had in my mind for all these years. So once again, I think being part of the planning board, I could kind of go forward with that thought process and learn a lot more, you know, about the bylaws of the town and be able to be instrumental.
I think we lost the, the end of your statement, Ellen.
Well, I was just saying that, you know, having had that history and speaking with many businesses in the area, I want to see this town go forward and keep businesses in the town and not have them leave abruptly.
I'll answer that too, John, if that's.
Anything else? Oops, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Cornelius?
Yes, there has to be a balance between business and rural development in this town. Personally, I love this town and the rural aspect of it, why we moved here to begin with. But we need to work to develop more commercial businesses. And I would like to see the center of town grow, but not at the expense of the rural character. I think that's why the planning board has put forward the transfer of development rights. It's, at this juncture in time, it's more important to use that as a lever or a crutch to be able to build up the center of town and allow commercial businesses to expand within, within the available area, which is very limited in this town. And to attract more appropriate businesses through the use of these rights and a more established transfer of development rights law, bylaw, which will save some of the more rural aspects of this town. Thank you.
Roger?
Yes, I believe that we have in South Carver areas of businesses and in North Carver. I believe if we were very cautious down in Santa Clara, especially the airport, which I voted against years ago, where none of those buildings were supposed to come on Carver property. There is areas there. I know the town because other than being a school teacher, I also went into forestry business for 20 years. I know about every inch of Carver itself. There are a few areas on the outskirts of town that I would like to see develop, but develop in a way that we plan them out properly. Thank you.
Now, Richard?
Yes, I would like to see some more commercial development in the town, especially like some of the empty plazas that we have along Main Street. I think that's good land. I think there's a missed opportunity there to have some growth go there. And I'd like to keep, you know, the rural areas rural, you know. There is a place of commercial and there's a, you know, place to keep, you know, citizens, you know, with their personal, they don't need to have, you know, commercial going through the neighborhood. Yeah, I think Main Street could use some commercial development in these plazas that are vacant.
Thank you.
Is that it for your questions, Richard?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. Any other questions from any other board members? Okay, seeing none. If it's all right with you, Sarah, we'll start with nominations for the three-year position.
That works for me.
I make a motion that we approve Ellen Sardillo for the three-year position.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
My, I just, my rationale, do you want other people to nominate other people for that?
Yeah, I think, yeah. Yeah, the way we generally do it is we do a nomination and then a second, and then we can discuss it. And then we'll go on to other candidates and nominate them, and then we'll take a vote on each one.
Okay, so I nominated Ellen Sardillo because she came before the board to be part of the planning board. And I'm big on people taking that energy first and foremost, and she is. And I like seniority. And basically, she has seniority. She starts over. Granted, she's only been in the position for a short period of time, but she still has that seniority that I want to keep. And Ellen, thank you very much. And that's why.
Very much.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Cornelius Shea for the one-year position.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I'd like, I'd also like to nominate Roger Shores for the one-year position.
Well, I didn't know. Can we?
Well, we're going for the three-year position right now?
Okay, I thought, I thought I heard of the nominations for the one-year position.
Okay, so I'd like, I'd like to nominate Roger Shores for the three-year position.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion about this candidate? Okay, is there any other? Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Richard for the three-year.
I'll second that.
The motion, the second, and any further discussion about this candidate? Okay, so I guess we'll take a vote on each one, starting with Ellen. I think I'll just do a roll call vote.
Yes, we have to, actually.
Yeah, so we'll do a roll call vote. If that's, sorry, do you want me to do that, Sarah, or do you want to do that?
Sure, go right ahead, yes.
So, so for Ellen Sedillo for the three-year term, Mr. Belbin, yes or no?
Robert Belbin says aye.
Okay, Jennifer Bogart?
Jennifer Bogart says aye.
Okay, Sarah Hewens?
Sarah Hewens says no.
James Hoffman?
James Hoffman says yes.
Mark Townsend?
Mark Townsend says yes.
All right, Bruce Mackey? Yes, Kevin Robinson?
Kevin Robinson says yes.
John Gasky?
John Gasky says no.
Okay, so. So that's one, six yeses and two noes. For the three-year term, so. This. So I guess that would take care of it for the three-year position.
No, we have to vote on Roger Shores. He was nominated and seconded as well.
Okay, but if you have already voted, does that, okay, so Roger Shores?
Yeah.
Okay. But we can't. We only have one three-year position and one one-year position.
Correct. And Mr. Shores was, was more interested in the three-year position as well.
Right. So how does that work now that we've already voted, Ellen?
We take a vote on Mr. Shores.
All right. All right, Robert Belbin?
Robert Belbin says no.
Jennifer Bogart?
Jen Bogart, no.
Sarah Hewens?
Sarah Hewens, yes.
James Hoffman?
But just to be clear, so if I voted no already, I cannot vote no again, is that right?
Fade it off. You can vote yes.
I, I lost that completely.
Me too.
You can vote however you want for Mr. Shores. Doesn't matter what you have for.
I, I lost, I'm sorry.
Your question was, you can't vote now?
If I voted yes for one of the three-year candidates, can I vote yes for a second candidate? Or is it just one yes?
I think so. Maybe, you know, you like them both. I don't know. Vote your conscience.
I just know legally, if I could do both, that's all. That's all is asked, I've ever had this type of vote before, so. James Hoffman, yes.
Mark Townsend?
As much as I think Mr. Shores is eminently qualified for the three-year position, I just think when you're the alternate, you should have an opportunity to step up. So I have to vote no on Mr. Shores.
Okay. I have to vote. I have to vote no also because, yes, I'll vote no. Okay, Kevin Robinson?
Kevin Robinson votes no.
John Gasky?
John Gasky votes no.
Okay. So Cornelius Shea was only interested in a one-year position.
We still have Richard.
We have to do motions in seconds for that.
Oh, okay, we didn't get anything for that. Okay, so it's just between, it's just between Ellen and Roger.
We still have Richard.
Well.
Voting on the three-year position?
Yes, we are, for Mr. Shores.
We already, so we've already voted for, we've already voted on Roger Shores. So we had two yeses, one, two, three, four, five, six, no.
We also have Richard Deon that we still need to vote on.
But did he, was he nominated and seconded? Okay.
We haven't, we haven't nominated anybody for the one-year position yet.
We're not voting on the one-year.
Premature.
This is still the three-year position.
Well, actually, someone nominated Connie Shaw for the one-year, and I seconded that motion.
Okay. I did. Robinson already did that. It was out of order, but I made a motion for Cornelius Shea to be in the one-year position.
And I made a motion for Roger Shores to be in the one-year position.
I'm sorry, but Mr. Deon was put forth and seconded for the three-year position.
Okay, so on, Richard Deon for the three-year position, Robert Belbin?
Yeah, okay.
No.
Okay, Jennifer Bogart?
Jen Bogart, no.
Okay, Sarah Hewens?
Sarah Hewens says no.
James Hoffman?
James Hoffman says no.
Mark Townsend?
Mark Townsend says no.
Bruce Mackey, no. Kevin Robinson?
So yes, I have the same question that Jim Hoffman had. If I've already given a yes for this position, am I obligated to say no? Because I would like to say yes for him.
Well, that's what we've been doing, so I guess you can vote yes.
I vote yes.
John Gasky?
John Gasky votes yes.
Okay, so that's two yeses and six noes. So it looks like for the three-year position, Ellen Sedino, Sedillo has, is going to have that seat.
Thank you very much.
Congrats.
Congratulations, Ellen.
Congratulations.
I'd just like to say, and I should have said this at the very beginning, I thank all the people that have stepped forward and, and done this tonight and answered all the questions that we have had. And, you know, we have a lot of good candidates here tonight. So I thank everybody for, for coming before us. And I know it's not an easy thing to be on the planning board sometimes. And there are a lot of rules and regulations, different things you have to go through. And to, to step forward is a good thing, is that you people have done. So I thank you all for doing this. All right, so we're going, we're going to go, we're going to go for the one-year position now. So nominations for the one-year position?
I nominate.
Okay.
We have to get better down here. Can't do anything.
Couldn't figure that out at all. One at a time, let's try it again.
Mark Townsend nominates Roger Shores for the one-year position.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second for Roger Shores.
Jen Bogart nominates Cornelius Shea for the one-year position.
Cornelius Shea, do we have a second?
I'll second.
I already made a motion for it.
So we have a motion and a second, okay.
And I'll make a motion that Rich Deon? The one-year?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for the three. Okay, let's start by voting on Roger Shores for one-year position.
Did you say Roger Shores?
Yes, didn't we, that he was nominated, right?
Yes, Mark Townsend.
Yes, so we'll start with Roger first.
Okay, thank you.
So Robert Belbin?
No.
Okay, Jennifer Bogart?
Jen Bogart, no.
Sarah Hewens?
Sarah Hewens, yes.
James Hoffman?
James Hoffman, yes. And also like to just, I can just make a brief comment that I want to thank Mr. Shores for stepping forward, because he's never, in all the years that I was on the planning board, had a, someone from the cranberry industry actually volunteer to come on board. So I appreciate that. And I think it's important to have that outwork, especially with all the projects that have gone on. I'd vote yes for Roger.
Mark Townsend?
Mark Townsend votes yes.
Bruce Mackey, yes. Kevin Robinson?
Kevin Robinson votes yes. No, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I vote no.
Okay. John Gasky?
John Gasky votes no.
So there's one, two, three, four yeses and four noes. Okay, we'll go on to Cornelius Shea. Robert Belbin?
Robert Belbin says aye. Or yes.
Jennifer Bogart?
Jen Bogart says yes.
Sarah Hewens?
Well, Sarah Hewens is also going to say yes.
James Hoffman?
James Hoffman says no.
Mark Townsend?
Mark Townsend says no.
Bruce Mackey, no. Kevin Robinson?
Bruce, how did you vote?
No. Kevin, Kevin Robinson?
Says yes. I vote yes.
Yes. And John Gasky?
John Gasky votes yes.
Okay, that's one, two, three, four. That's five yeses and three noes. All right, so. And then the last one is Richard Deon. So we'll go to Robert Belbin.
Robert Belbin says aye.
Jennifer Bogart?
Jen Bogart, no.
Sarah Hewens?
Sarah Hewens says. Sarah Hewens says no.
James Hoffman.
James Hoffman says no.
Mark Townsend.
Mark Townsend says no.
Bruce Mackey, no, Kevin Robinson.
I'm gonna vote yes because I appreciate the fact that he wants to, uh, participate and be part of our town.
John Gasky.
John Gasky votes yes.
So, um, Cornelius got the most votes, uh, Roger got four yeses, Cornelius got five, and Richard got three, so Cornelius Shea is in the one-year position.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right, so next, since Ellen was picked for, uh, a permanent, uh, three-year position, we have an opening for the Planning Board alternate. And the two, Roger.
I'm having a lot of trouble hearing you, everyone's breaking up.
Um, the next is for the, uh, Planning Board alternate. And, uh.
I'd like to alternate, I'd like to nominate Mr. Deon for the Planning Board alternate.
I'll second that.
I'd like to nominate Shores.
Well, I don't know if he was interested in that, are you, uh, interested in that, Mr. Shores?
No, not, thank you.
So we have, uh, Richard Deon and he wins by default as Planning Board alternate.
All right, congratulations.
Congratulations, Mr. Deon. Do we still technically need to take a vote?
Um, I suppose we could, it wouldn't hurt.
Robert Belbin says yes.
So we have one yes, Mr. Belbin, uh, Jen Bogart.
Jen Bogart, yes.
Sarah Hewens.
Sarah Hewens, so it's no.
James Hoffman.
James Hoffman says yes.
Mark Townsend.
Mark Townsend says yes.
Bruce Mackey, yes, Kevin Robinson.
Kevin Robinson votes yes.
And John Gasky.
John Gasky votes yes.
So one, two, three, four, five, so we got seven yeses and one no, so, uh, Richard, you will be, uh, a new alternate for a three-year position. So, um, so the new members should get sworn in, um, as soon as possible, uh, and you can see, uh, Jim Walsh about that, or you can go down to, um, well, you can talk to Jim Walsh about getting sworn in, um, the, and our next meeting is gonna be July fourteenth, and that, we're, generally, we start at six-thirty, but, I mean, at seven, but we're gonna start at six-thirty this time because, uh, we're gonna have a meeting and then we're gonna have, uh, a training session for the new members, so, um, and I'd just like to thank everybody that, uh, came, again, just to thank everybody that that came here tonight, spoke tonight. We had a lot of, uh, good candidates, I was surprised at the, uh, at the crowd of candidates that we had, all these, all these people that we had, so it was good to to see, uh, a good response.
And I too, Mr. Mackey, I wanted to thank everybody, um, I really appreciate all the effort that went into applying for this position, I know it's hard. Thank you, Mr. Belbin.
Uh, just one thing, actually, two things, um, first one is, Mr. Shores, thank you very much for applying, we do really appreciate you, and for all the years of service you put to our town, it is appreciated, everything that you do, and the second thing is for the Chairman of the Planning Board, Mr. Mackey, um, the Fire Department has a great training room over there, um, and trainings are not covered under the open meeting law, if I remember correctly, um, so if you're gonna have a specialized training for your members or whatnot, um, you could turn around and and have it over there, um, and if you wanna record it, it can be recorded there too also, but, um, really, it's a great place just to sit down and discuss what your roles are and and how things are done.
Well, thank you for that information.
Thank you.
Mr. Eric, could I just say that I would like to also, um, thank Mr. Shores and I appreciate the fact that, uh, he wanted to do this, I only wish we had an extra position for him.
Okay, well, having said that, um, well, entertain a motion for the Planning Board adjournment.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, uh, those in favor.
Aye.
I'll do a roll call, Bruce Mackey, aye, Kevin Robinson.
Kevin Robinson, aye.
John Gasky.
Aye, John Gasky says aye.
All right, uh, so, uh, with that, we'll let, uh, say goodnight to everyone from the Planning Board and let the Select Board, uh, continue and and hopefully it'll be a short evening for you people.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, have a great night.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Select.
Sarah, I can't hear what you're saying.
Well, I don't know why I'm.
You're back now.
I'm back, I wanna take a one minute, do this meeting, okay?
I didn't, you wanna take a break?
One minute.
A one-minute break?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, we're back. Mr. Belbin, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, ma'am.
Thank you for the music, it was nice. Okay. Mr. Levon.
Yes, I think, just to go back one item, I think we screened out, uh, that, uh, Mr. Hoffman is duly appointed by the Board of Selectmen, so my apologies to Jim for any confusion that he may have had, um, although it was our confusion. Moving on to the, my update, as you see in your packet, I have a number of things, nine items, I'm not going to.
Rick, I'm not catching anything you're saying.
Oh, okay. All right, you hearing me now, Sarah?
Yeah, that sounds better, thank you.
Okay. As you know, I, uh, in the agenda packet, I did give you, uh, a written update, there's nine items, I'm not going to go over, I'm only gonna hit a couple of those tonight, and, cause to the extent that anybody has questions on other things, please let me know. The first item is the, the CARES Act, um, and people know the CARES Act is, is the name for the, the funding coming from the, the federal government that's being administered by the county to help cities and towns deal with the, with the pandemic. Can I be heard?
I can hear you.
Okay. And, uh, the county had about ninety million dollars to to disperse, our first application is going in tomorrow morning for about two-hundred-and-twelve-thousand dollars, uh, primarily, this is for future planning, the town, uh, oh, we only expended.
Rick, we're, I, we're really losing you, and, um, I'm pretty sure, because I did one of these meetings earlier.
Is anybody else hearing me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm hearing you fine, I can hear you fine.
Well, now, but then you you get lost.
Okay, I'll try to keep this quick then.
Okay, all right, I'm not trying to.
Not to, not to break their heart, that's okay, um, our first application tomorrow for for funding under the CARES Act, for about two-hundred-and-twelve-thousand dollars is being submitted, most of that is for approximately, the overwhelming majority of that is actually for future planning, hardware, software for town officials and, uh, school officials and schoolchildren to be able to work remotely and teach remotely, and there was only about twenty thousand dollars that is actually for reimbursable expenses, uh, that the town, uh, was, right now, required to, to spend because of the, uh, because of the, uh, the damage, so to speak, so that's going in tomorrow, there will be three other rounds that will likely be competitive, this is not a competitive round, and we'll have to, we don't know what the parameters are going to be yet on those, uh, and the conditions on the, on the competitive grant process, so keep you informed. The other piece of information, because it was, uh, you know, something that was discussed at town meeting, clearly, is that I am meeting with the, uh, officials from the union this week to discuss implementing, implementing the new department, there are obviously some labor issues which I can't get into in this form, um, however, dealing with some of the eliminated positions as well as some of the accommodations that have been previously discussed, hopefully we'll have that ironed out, uh, by the, hopefully this week. Another issue that has, uh, been come to our attention just in the last couple of weeks is we have, um, some of, a pilot program, and there may be another one at some point, uh, that has issues with how the property taxes are treated for, uh, projects that have solar panels on them, to what extent does that, um, in some fashion, uh, mitigate, um, or add to the property value? The pilot program is not, um, is not necessarily intended, uh, to reduce the, uh, the best value of the, of the, of the property, so it does get into a little bit of a problem where, is this farmland, uh, is this a higher-invest use because of solar panels? Should the land under solar panels be taxed, if so, to what extent? Um, is the, the solar panels essentially mean that a bog is no longer agricultural, uh, for taxation purposes? So these, these are all questions that we're trying to pull apart, it will have some implications for some of these, uh, these, uh, projects that are located on farmland, but it's a little, a little premature right now to to know exactly what it is that's, uh, that's gonna come out of this. Uh, we are in, going to be seeking an opinion from the Department of Revenue, and we have also had some conversation with Town Council on this subject. I don't have any answer at this moment, we are doing our homework, but again, just keep in mind that this really could become an issue, uh, in the, in the future, uh, in terms of how we tax property that has solar panels on that property. Uh, these issues were not really, um, explored legally at the time that these pilot agreements were entered into. And the last thing I'm going to mention of this lengthy update is just, uh, the North Cobre, um, landfill slash Plymouth Street waterline, that is, um, it began because this is, this is pretty, uh, um, we'll say a hot issue at the moment, but I am meeting this week with the, uh, the contracted engineer for the town, just to ensure that the project is moving forward as, uh, in a timely manner. I am told that that is the case, uh, prime engineering should be completing its design very soon, and application for building permits should be filed ahead of schedule. However, meeting with them this coming week on the fifteenth, and if anybody is, uh, available, obviously we can't have a quorum, but, uh, please feel free to get in touch with me if you'd like to, uh, be part of that. And the other items, um, I will leave to your discretion as to how much you wish to read or not, and feel free to get, ask me any questions or follow up with me on any of these other items.
Rick, Rick, I'm sorry, but I did not hear any of the last thing that you said about Plymouth Street, I got thrown.
Yes.
Out of the meeting, so I missed your whole.
Okay. Okay, can you hear me right now, Sarah?
Can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
No.
Okay.
Now I can, now I can. Now I can't.
Okay, I just, I was just stating, okay, is, is everybody else able to hear me?
Yes, sir.
It's very sketchy.
Okay, so, okay, I'll, I'll, I don't know what to do, Sarah, except, accepts maybe speak slowly, so that every other word may make sense, um, I am meeting this week on the fifteenth with the town's, uh, consulting engineer, um, on the North Cobre landfill slash Plymouth Street consent order, the project, as I'm informed, is ahead of schedule, the, uh, permits have to be applied for by a certain date, the engineering and design work that goes into submitting those, I'm told is ahead of schedule, um, however, as I mentioned.
I lost you again.
Okay, you're, you're frozen here on the screen too, so I'm, I think.
I don't know, I don't know what, what the problem is here, but I'm pretty sure it's not here because I have this computer scientist husband guy.
Well, I was gonna mention that, yeah. Okay.
He says we have a really good connection here.
Okay. If, I would, uh, at this point, I'm, it doesn't, uh, I wouldn't be insulted if you move on with the rest of your meeting, we'll leave it at that.
What?
I'm sorry.
Am I the only one that can't hear anyone?
No, Sarah, your, your screen keeps freezing up and I think that's the issue, um, because we're all hearing Rick.
I am fine.
Fine. Unless we mute him.
Which, I can get that at home, Bob. Okay.
Sarah's frozen again.
Yeah.
How would you like me to proceed in, Mr. Vice Chairman, if not Chair?
Rick.
I think Sarah's back now.
Okay.
We, I, I, I don't know.
So Sarah, you're not coming in well at all. Um, what Rick has said was that.
Who, me or Rick?
You.
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 Okay.
So I, I suggest, Rick, thank you very much for those updates and the other members, those issues that are on the, um, in our packet, any issues having to deal with that, you can go back to Rick and talk to him individually about those, and those will be brought up in another day.
Let me, um, can you?
Sarah, I can't, you're frozen.
Yeah, you're frozen, Sarah.
Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna sneak back to the agenda here, um.
Yeah, I just want the record to show, Mr. Belbin, that you're first official.
Hear me, so, so I will entertain a motion to release the executive.
Yeah. I hate to do this, Sarah, but, all right, um, I'll make a motion that we release the executive session meeting minutes for February twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty, and March third, two thousand and twenty.
Uh, I. Say it again, Bob.
Hi.
Is that a motion, Bob?
That was a motion.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Can Jim and I vote on this, since we weren't on the board during those meetings when the minutes were taken?
Well, the, I think the protocol would be is that you do not vote. You would, if you were needed to vote in order to constitute a quorum, that would be different. But in this case, there is no.
Well, I, I have a question on this. Should, should we be discussing this in open session, or should we be discussing this in executive session?
Can we second that? Can you second it, so for discussion, and then we can go forward with that?
I'll second it for discussion.
Right.
Thank you.
Right, it's, yes, but the advice is that if you're going to discuss it in any substantive way, you're effectively, I don't wanna say releasing the minutes, but that they are subject to at least public request. If there was, if there was substantive issues or questions that the board had, then it wa, I would recommend that you schedule this deliberation for an executive session, and then you could decide what you, you could ultimately make some decision and then come out into open session and, and then take a vote. But if, but if it's not substantive to the context or the content of the minutes themselves, you could release them, if you chose to.
Okay. So can Jen and, and Jim Hoffman vote on, to release these minutes, Rick?
I think legally they can, but I think it's, I think it's poor protocol.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to release both minutes. We're not discussing content, Bob, right?
Right, I'm not gonna discuss content. I just wanna, on Mark's issue, I, I have a feeling that in the future, if we're going to release or potentially release executive session meeting minutes, is that we have a short executive session prior to our regular meeting, where we can make sure our i's are dotted, our t's are crossed before we release anything, and thus then go ahead and release it.
We can do that.
At that meeting. So I think that would be the best protocol.
I definitely have questions, which I, I think are substantive.
Mr. Townsend, you may go ahead.
Uh, sorry.
Except that I can't hear you.
Yeah, you were breaking up a little bit of me as well, Sarah. I have, I have questions about the minutes that I think are substantive, I think we should discuss, especially for the benefit of the new members. So my suggestion is, would be that we schedule an executive session to discuss releasing these.
Okay. Well, we have a motion and a second, and so it's not debatable. All in favor of releasing the minutes?
Aye.
Aye. So. That means we don't wanna release the minutes. Hmm.
No. We are.
It, it doesn't. We need to have a discussion about the minutes. That, that's all.
Mr. Lefan?
Oh, I would also add that you haven't asked for no votes, and you haven't asked for any extensions.
Okay, are there any no votes? Thank you. No votes to release the minutes?
Uh, no.
Okay, do we have any, any extensions?
Abstaining, Jen Bogart.
Abstaining, Jim Hoffman.
Okay, so the minutes are released, because there are two extensions, one no and two yeah. Okay. And we can figure out this technology here. And community announcements, Mr. Belbin, would you like to go first?
Thank you. Just wanna let people know that it's my intention to go back to the farmer's market this Sunday to have a nice little table. If people wanna come around, say hi. All right, good to see people going back and forth for the summer. Also, that if you need to get rid of anything from your top, your house, take advantage of the transfer station now. I actually took advantage of a $25 to get rid of a TV. That money goes to the town, you go to the building department, they'll give you a sticker to put it on your TV, and you gotta drive it down to Marion. But no matter what, it's out of your house, so. And I wanna thank Tom Walsh for all his years of, of services for that town. I missed his going away party, but I just wanna make sure he understands that I appreciate everything he's done over the years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Belbin. Ms. Bogart?
I have nothing tonight.
Okay, Mr. Hoffman?
I have nothing tonight.
Mr. Townsend?
Uh, thank you. I, I just wanna, again, thank Tom Walsh for all his years of service for the town. He, he was a true leader, and especially during the whole COVID situation. I think him, as well as our other police chiefs, have done just a tremendous job. So just thank you, Tom, on behalf of the town for all you've done. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just, I'm gonna say a couple of quick things. Over the weekend, I did get some calls from residents about fireworks. There was pretty irate calls. So I'm going to be the grouchy person here. And I just want everyone to know that I did speak with the police chief about it. He advised people who have concerns about fireworks to give his office a call. No matter. And I understand people think they're funny. He said they are illegal. And he really hopes that people will consider other people, particularly vets, who might have issues with this kind of noise, and also people's pets. He said that if violators, some violators are sometimes very hard to catch, but if caught, they will be prosecuted. You've probably already read that the King Richard's Fair and Old Home Day are both canceled this year, which is very sad. So hopefully, we will have them next year. And I wanted to echo everybody's sentiment about, about Tom Walsh. He's, he's one of the best managers I know, and a, a good friend, and really served this town well. So thank you, Tom, we appreciate your service. And that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion. Second here.
All in favor?
Aye, Robert Belbin.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Jen Bogart says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
Sarah Hewens says aye. Okay, thank you guys.
Bye, everyone. Thank you.
At the end. Take care.